Yes.
Okay, then we've been, it's been moved and seconded and we're in executive session for student discipline, so let's head on in for student discipline.
Okay, this is where I got in trouble last time. I went into a document and then I didn't know how to get back. I can't do that, but when I hear, I don't see that. Or what, just tell me where you.
I have even given a motion here as the way to set up.
I tried to. What did, what you just said?
Set up process.
Okay, okay, thanks.
That takes us back.
Thank you.
I gotta put my name because.
You've been gone.
You know that.
Me too. Yeah, I agree.
You make a motion there.
Terry, and I second it.
Is he there?
Yeah, I, and there's things that I, um, what's that again?
Stayed out of trouble. How's your knee doing?
It's really good. When I walk up.
Yeah, you're good.
So.
No, it's.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So it's cheers that we're adding, cheerleaders, elected officers, that kind of sort of marching man and down the.
So they represent our school.
So this is probably.
It felt fairly chicken.
So.
I wouldn't say very much.
Not.
No, not because I just started getting into.
But.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
So they represent our school.
So this is probably.
It felt fairly chicken.
So.
I wouldn't say very much.
Of course, we have been so.
Not.
Because I just started getting into.
But.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
So.
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 Yeah.
Well, not only marchers, but yeah, but the representing school.
Right.
Right.
Definition.
And.
Yeah.
So.
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 Yeah.
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 So.
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 Obviously. She. Her name is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Her, her name is. So we're waiting on that. They didn't do this. You have it. So. This is bad. Why is it? It's gonna be interesting. Hopefully he's around to stop this.
It doesn't.
Doesn't do. Eight months. I don't know. I hope Jen is not about to give you the time. Now I. David teaches. I saw a lot of people have. But I don't think. I don't know.
Oh, we're way behind. Oh, well.
Yes, I just had the executive session. Soon we're going to be in start.
Five thirty, yeah.
Yeah, I did that schedule, I think. Yeah, you're right, it was gonna do five because we were gonna.
Plotting.
Have the lunch and afterwards, or the dinner afterwards, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, I don't know why we turned it.
Oh, that looks really dangerous. Are they plotting against us?
There's been a lot of invitations unchanged.
Yeah, I, I hope I can keep track of everything.
Okay. Up the park. Well. I just have a whole. I have a whole list of things that we need to get on the agenda sometime. Right here, there's eight of them. And some of them I sent to Carolyn, and they didn't get on, and so.
We need to do that. Okay, if we can wait for the card game down there to get broken up, then we'll move forward.
The microphone's not on.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Testing, testing, testing.
Is it on now, Jenna?
No.
We got it? Okay, well, we're glad to have that card game down there broken up so that we can get moving on here. Okay, I take a motion now that we come out of executive session.
I move we come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in our, in our study session. Bob, would you look back behind you and see if there's any public input? Unless one of you guys have signed up, there isn't, so.
They're not public.
Oh, Doug, you ready to give us a, an oration here? Okay, thank you for checking on that. Okay, we're going to move on then to our district drug testing policy amendment. And was Mike gonna do that?
Bob.
Bob, okay.
So, thanks for letting me come. Mike Lick, he asked me to cover for him on this. I think you have a copy of this? Do you have a copy of the policy? So on the second page.
If it's in your.
Oh.
Hang on for me.
You, it's attached to that part of the agenda. So you just go click on the document.
Yeah, they've got a copy.
So on the top of the second page where it's. Says effective date, and it talks about April of two thousand and seven. We've added after the, well, cash school district implements a mandatory drug testing program for students who participate in Utah High School Activity Association extracurricular activities. And then we've added and other non-club activities where students represent the school in grades nine through twelve. So instead of just the activities that have, that are high school activity association events. Yeah, it would be other groups that are not club groups, but that represent the school. And so on the last, second to last page, or maybe it's the last page in yours, I'm not sure. Where it has a list of all of the activities under the voluntary testing program. It lists all the sports and activities that are part of the Utah High School Activities Association. But then below that, other non-club activities. So what we're talking about adding are cheerleaders, elected class officers, the executive council, marching band, and then WHAMMA, BAGA, or ambassadors, or we call them reps at Ridgeline. But another elected group that works with the executive council. So those are the ones that we're, we would like to add, since they represent our school. And that started with a request of some advisors and even a parent or two that expressed a concern and would like to see that happen. And we thought it was appropriate.
On the, the last line where it lists WHAMMA, BAGA, and ambassadors, do we, do we need to have the specific title of, of each group? Like, I mean, like you said, at Ridgeline, they're representatives, not ambassadors. Do we need to have representatives added to that line, or whatever they're called in, in the other schools? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes, uh-huh, and, yeah, and I think it's still WHAMMA at Mountain Crest, I believe. It's reps also, okay. So, yeah, we probably should make that change and remove WHAMMA. BAGA, I think it's still BAGA without the extra G. That, Skyview, I think?
Yeah, I, I saw signs there today that said BAGA.
Yeah, so I think, at least for right now, that would be BAGA. And then, and I don't think ambassadors, I think just BAGA and then representatives. I think that's a good point.
That would make, that would make more sense.
It's more accurate, yeah.
I, I would prefer personally myself, if you had it written out, Boys and Girls Association, because there's some people who might not know that, rather than just have that.
And I think it's actually going by a different name now, isn't it?
No.
It still has BAGA, but I thought they changed the. Okay, so right now it is, okay.
So you could put their official title in there, parentheses, BAGA.
Okay.
Then anybody, any parent who reads the policy, if they read it, they know what you're talking about.
So, instead of what it says, that last line, it would say, Boys and Girls Association, in parentheses, BAGA, comma, Representatives.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other questions or anything else?
Just one other comment. I know that in our policy, we have that before the different organizations will be allowed to play, that we have to give them a drug education class. And I've only, and, and Barry Health Department is the one that does that.
Right.
And we've only done it to one high school. So we need to get Mountain Crest taken care of, and we need to get Ridgeline taken care of.
Yeah, we were discussing that. I agree. It's difficult, frankly, and I know it's in here, it's difficult to do it the first season of the year because teams aren't selected, and kids aren't in school yet. So to get them in the middle of the summer to all come, assuming they might be on a sport, is difficult. That's not an excuse for us not having it done now. But it is difficult to do it before they ever participate. When that starts, those events start either the first of August or even the end of July.
Yeah, and, and that's not the issue, but.
Yeah.
But last year, we waited clear till the end of the year before we got that done.
Okay.
And, and I would really like to have that done before.
Sure.
And it only has to be ninth graders, because the others, and ninth graders and move-ins, because the other class, the upperclassmen have already had that class.
Okay.
So it just has to be your freshmen and your move-ins. Now, some schools do everybody.
Right.
You know, and that's up to the school.
Okay.
So we need to get that done at Mountain Crest. If you'll work with, with Kevin, and just have Kevin give me a call, we'll get that scheduled. And same way, if you'll have Jim give me a call.
Now, does it need to be separate events, or can it be just one large group? That's what we've done in the past, I believe, is one large group.
From, from, from my perspective, it's a lot better if we do teams, you know. But with, with, with the situation where you do it with your zero hour, we just have to do.
With, with flex, yeah.
With flex. We just have to do the best we can do, Bob. So that's up to the individual school.
Okay.
We're not gonna dictate that. It just has to be done.
Okay.
It's more effective if we do it with smaller groups as any, any teaching assignment is. But do we have to do?
Yeah, okay. All right, good.
Okay, this is one last thing, and it's just a little picky thing. Up at the top of where the red starts.
Yes.
Under activities, theater just needs to be tabbed over, which I'm sure you'll do. You'll see that when you're fixing it.
That's very picky. I don't even, it looks, it, it is here, I think it's okay.
It is?
Yeah, my sheet.
Our, our screen, it's not.
Yeah, the digital copy has it.
Yeah, okay, so you're fed, Ben.
Ignore that.
I promise you, it's a, it's a straight line right there. Okay.
I reset my comment.
I just did it, Kathy, all you have to do is do it.
Oh, just put it over.
Just put it over. And it's there.
I have one other question.
Okay.
On that last line, the Boys and Girls, comma, Representative.
It's okay, I can fix it.
Do we need clarification? My first, when I read that, Representatives of what?
Well, that's actually what they're calling themselves. They are elected officials, but they're, the only clarification I could think of would be that they put on homecoming, and then do some other special projects during the year. But that's the group, they're elected, and they're called Representatives. So I don't know what you would put.
When I first, when I first read that, I looked at and say, is that saying anybody represents the school?
Well, we could put in parentheses behind that, like we did with BAGA, we could put reps, because that's actually what they go by, so.
Or, or what if you just said any elected or appointed student officials? That covers you for a lot of people.
Yeah, we just put, in the other part of the, of the document, it said, non-club activities where students represent the school. But we could do that, elected.
Well, I'm just, I'm just using your wording, that they were, that they're elected.
How about if we do this? Where it says cheerleaders, then it said elected class officers. Exa, we could put, comma, executive council, BAGA, and reps, or representatives, and put it all in one line, because they're all, those are all the elected officials.
Sure.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. And we'll try to make it all in a straight line.
We fixed it for, for ourselves. It's there.
Anything else?
You know, my son's on the debate team, and he feels a little put out, he needs to be drug tested for debate. And I told him, I says, if you're really good debater, you might be able to talk your way out of it, so.
Randall, please be careful. Please be careful, because when I do do those education classes for those, the debaters debate everything that I tell them.
All right, we good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, our next one is Ridgeline High School Student Club application. So I assume, Dave, you're gonna be the one that's doing that?
He does not even look like Brittany.
Hey, look at that, no limp at all, buddy.
And pants on. No shorts, right?
But where's your red hair?
Oh, she's, she's doing some family business today, and so, what, so I'm not as, as pretty or smell as good as Brittany, so. Anyway, she's asked if I could, if I could represent her today. We have five clubs that we'd like to present to the school board. And I think you have a, you have a copy, I think that's, she said that. This is the clubs, not the. This is the Ridgeline Club proposal. I'll be coming back for the, the application for the Utah Activities Association. But there's five clubs, the Guitar Club, the Recycling Club, the Hawk Squad, Magic the Gathering, and the Card Fight Club. And those are the clubs that we'd like to propose. Each one of them have an advisor who is on staff at Ridgeline High School. They all have a constitution and a purpose, and, and you can kind of read through those. I actually had to kind of read through the Magic the Gathering Club, and I was educated on that, and the Card Fight Club, so. But they, as, the advisors are all wonderful employees and teachers there, and will supervise that. Any questions on these clubs?
What is the Hawk Club?
The Hawk Club is kind of like a, it's, it's a, a club of, of students who are going to, kind of like, kind of like a superfan club.
I found it, sorry.
And they're gonna represent not only just the athletics, but they're gonna, going to, to all the, you know, events, whether it's musicals and things, and where they're gonna be involved. They're gonna celebrate student success and be a part of that club with shirts, and to just be a rah 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 for not just the sports, but all the activities there.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Kathy, take over, let me see your computer.
Oh, or Jenna can come help me. I have a trou, I have trouble getting out of.
Okay, any other questions for, for Dave on this? On these clubs? Okay, thank you, David. Okay, let's move on now to our Mountain Crest Club application. And that's going to be presented by Mr. Snow, Doug Snow. And so, looks like you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them?
Well, actually, there's six new ones, and then you should have a document having the old clubs, which are still in existence.
Oh.
So I have.
That's different than what we have.
Yes, okay, what are your?
Yeah, current, yeah, one of the documents has current clubs.
Second one over on the bottom row.
Oh, okay, got it.
And then the new clubs.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yo-Yo Club, Hammock Spirit Club, UNICEF Chess, and Flag Rugby. My favorite being the Yo-Yo Club.
What is the Cube Cl, the Cube Club?
You, the Chess Club?
Cube.
It's Cube. It's a Spirit, Spirit Club, and then Cube Club.
Each member's how to solve a variety of cubes puzzles.
Oh, so it'd be kind of like Rubik's Club?
I, I didn't send, I didn't submit that, so I don't know.
Wait, that says it's a Ridgeline Club.
That guy put it the wrong way.
Is that what it is?
Ridgeline Cubing Club.
Then that would give us the correct number.
Okay.
That we have here.
All right.
Okay, now, one caution that I have, Doug, is with the Hammock Club, make sure that they're not too high off the ground when they suspend themselves.
Yeah, and their safety concern, the student said, if you don't tie it right, you'll fall on your bum. That was his write-up for the safety, so.
Yeah, and, and it's okay if they, if they hit, if they're not too far off the ground.
You bet. It's a good point.
Okay, well, give us a chance to look these over.
Okay.
And do, do any of you have any questions as you look at, look at these clubs?
I want to know the interest in the Flag Rugby, Rugby Club. Because my son played rugby, and his interest in rugby was hitting.
Yeah, and so we, we didn't want to have a full-contact rugby club, so it's more like flag football.
Right.
But teaching them the rugby skills, the passing, and, and following the rules, but having it be, you know, with the flags.
Is there a lot of interest? Is it co-ed?
I believe so, yeah, and we had two students come in that wanted to start that. So they had two, they, they wanted to submit a full contact, and then if that didn't pass, a, a flag, when the full contact didn't get passed, Mrs. Cutler and myself, so they're, they're happy with the flag football. So I think they're pretty excited.
Cool.
So, and there are rugby clubs across the state.
Right.
You know, Highland being the top example, of course, from the, the movie that was made from that, but, but that is a full-contact one, we didn't want to tackle that, so to speak.
Do you, do you still have a Quidditch Club there?
No, we have a Harry Potter Club.
Okay, one, one of the schools had a Quidditch Club, and we were.
Skyview.
We were supposed to be invited to that, we never got invited?
Never did.
Oh, what we're gonna do about that? Okay, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an application here now for.
Green Canyon.
Is it Green Canyon? For Green Canyon to be included into the USHA, USA, UHSA. So, Dave, you gonna take that one for us?
Yep, I'm gonna be a Green Canyon person today. I know you're looking at me with Skyview, and then I represented Ridgeline, so I'm kind of confused.
So what color is your shirt?
Uh, I'm really not sure right now, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of confused myself.
Okay.
Who I am, but.
Well, that's why it's multiple.
I'll get it figured out by the end of the year.
It, it's good that you have multiple colors in your current shirt.
There we go, yeah. Anyway, hey, this is an exciting time. We're moving along, and we get the opportunity to apply for our high school to be a part of the Utah Activities Association. So before you, as an application, it is, must be filed by November first with a five hundred dollar application fee. And so you can see that everything's filled out on the front page as far as some of the demographics and, or demographics of, well, the address and the school name and the mascot. And they did, by the way, they just got the address approved and changed. It was twenty-eight sixty North, North Park Boulevard, North Logan, a lot of north in there. But now it's twenty-eight sixty North Wolfpack Way.
Oh.
So it's kind of, kind of fun. On the backside, on the second sheet, you'll see that we are applying for a, a traditional public school, nine through twelve, the different activities we intend to be, to participate in. I just got the numbers today from our October one. The present enrollment as of October first, we're not putting anything there, because we don't even exist. But what our projections are at this point will be eleven hundred and forty students. And you can see the, the ninth and tenth grade, eleventh and twelfth grade, the enrollment right now from the different townships that we have. And then at the bottom, just, there, there's some signatures that are required by the Board of Education, the superintendent, myself. And so, once, we hope that you will approve that by next meeting, and then I can get this sent off and be a part of the Utah Activities Association.
Do they want, it says total of top three grades, do they want the?
Oh, the total, top three grades, I, but the total, I'll, I'll make that change. So that'll be, yeah, just take two ninety-three off of that one. Hi. I'll read, I'll redo that, and.
Okay.
And maybe get that, no, let's see, and get that to you, so if they can, everybody, when you do sign it, it'll be, it'll be accurate. So, anyway.
Okay, that's, that, that's an easy one. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll come back next month.
Yep, next.
Next, don't, don't make it next month.
No, it's the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, because UEA is the twentieth.
The last Thursday of the month. The first.
Yeah, well, on the twenty-seventh, you can send it in.
Alan? Yeah, I just got a comment, I was talking to Scott Rigby yesterday about swimming. Yeah, I just got a comment, I was talking to Scott Rigby yesterday, um, about the swimming program on the South End. And I thought it was interesting that it said last year Mountain Crest had 45 participants in their swimming program. And that now, having created two separate programs, one at Ridgeline, one at Mountain Crest, that both schools now have 45 participants each in their program. So it's doubled the participation, which is exactly what we were hoping it'd happen.
Yeah, and if we can get those Green Canyon Wolves to get some flippers on, we might be able to double our swim team, too.
Well, the hard part is that they have to share, they have to share a pool. And so their pool time is cut. So we'll see, um, we'll probably see a drop-off in state championships. Just because they can't, they don't have, they don't, it's not possible for them to get enough pool time.
That's something we might have to work on. Okay, thanks, Davey.
Guess you've got other entities on the South End that have ownership in that pool.
And, and we'll have probably the same thing on the North End.
Nah, cause that's all ours. But you have vested interests, but they don't have a vested, uh, ownership. And that's what was brought up this time, that's why I think they're all, both a half hour less than they had before.
Yeah. It's rough.
Okay, um, we are at our policy committee report. And Larry, I think that's you.
Yes. Okay, you should see there, uh, the, uh, policy classification system. They're on your page. And, uh, this is the one that we're proposing. We looked at staying with the book process like we've been, but we felt that, uh, being able to have the general areas and provide space between each one and to have them there alphabetized would make it much more user-friendly and available for people to be able to get into them and find what they need. So, so this is an example of what we were proposing.
Larry, will you explain what is happening with all of the policies that were on the old? How, how they're being trans, I mean, where they're being transferred?
Okay, they will, uh, they've gone through, uh, him and, uh...
Jenna.
Jenna.
Have gone through, probably mostly Jenna, and have pulled all of the subject areas into this classification system to try and put it where we feel that would fit best.
On board docs, that's...
Right, on board docs. And, uh, and then the policies will be placed in here. The policies will still have a number, as, uh, that seems to be the, the way that they fit best, but they'll be listed in an alphabetized format, so that, uh, should be much easier. I know when I go in right now to try and find things, it's, uh, it's an adventure every time.
Yep.
And so I think this will really help us, uh, you know, look it over. If you see some areas and you feel something fits better in a different section, there were a few things that, uh, were a little fuzzy. And, and so, uh, if you, if you feel that certain things would fit in a section better than another, rather than where, where we have it right now, uh, please let us know. And we'll get that. The other thing we're working on, uh, we would like to set a process in which policy is passed. Because, uh, again, uh, going back to my own experience, you know, with the library thing, you know, we, we had no idea what really was going to happen or what was going on. All we knew is we were coming to a board meeting to present, and we didn't know what to expect. And so what, what our thoughts were, and again, this is open to recommendation, our thoughts were to begin with the idea that we would have a first reading, uh, which would occur at a study session. At which time, we would then give feedback on the proposal. And also, it would be passed on to Kirk for a legal reading, to see if there are any concerns there. And, and then they would be able to come back to a board meeting with a second reading, in which we'd be able to, uh, to pass it. And that's the one question in my mind, maybe that second reading needs to also come to a study session where we have time to study it again before we pass on. But that's what we're trying to do, is to get a process that could be given to anyone who's working on a new, new, uh, policy. And, uh, they know this is the process you're going to go through in order to get the policy passed.
You know, I think that second suggestion was a pretty good one. Except if there are only minor changes, then let's get it passed and gone and done. If there are some major changes from the first reading that we need to do, then let's give it, you know, a study session time, but, but if there are...
Maybe we need to state that as, as, uh, a new policy.
Yeah, something like that. But if there are just things like we, we were dealing with, with the drug and alcohol policy that were just minor things, we wouldn't need to have a, a, a whole month to, to get through that. We'd only need to have, you know, study session next time we can pass it.
Yeah, Alan, I, I wonder if the system would allow us to actually make those minor changes in the proposed policy? Cause the nice thing is, is, is having the policy that's approved by the board, being out, automatically be able to just push the button and it overrides the current old policy and, and now becomes current. Um, so that there is no problem of updates not being, you know, included in the, in the ball.
But if we have it come to a study session, then that gives us, you know, that, the next two weeks to take a look at that, fix any minor things, and then click on that baby and it's gone.
Yeah, I like that.
So if I understand what you're saying, then you, then, um, so Larry's talking about new, a new policy procedure and you're talking about revising policy procedure?
Well, or either one.
So, well, new policy may need more time for study.
Yeah, and that's what I mean, if there, if, if we need more time, we can do that. But if it's a policy that, that's pretty cut and dry, just a few minor changes, let's get it going.
So maybe what you need to do is have procedure for, specifically for new policy and procedure different for revised policy, if it's a minor, if it's minor changes.
Although we will have some different situations. As I look at the wellness policy, I think that's gonna be pretty major.
Well, yeah, it will be, because of the guidelines that we have to follow and the changes that are going to have to come. Sure, and when we do, let's take it. But if we don't need it, let's not belabor the fact, the, the point.
We'll find a way to put that, uh, in an appropriate way.
Jenna, do you make all of the changes? Are you the one that's gonna be getting them on board docs after the changes are made?
I am, I'm actually the minister now.
Yeah, great job. Are you the one who did all the alphabetical stuff for this? Thank you. Already, it's easier to figure out.
This makes, this makes sense. That other, that other was a shoot in the dark here.
Careful there, might be somebody out there listening who has a vested interest in it, but it was that.
It was a shoot, a shoot in the dark there, I was just trying to find that. So, anyway, thank you, Larry and Jenna, for, for this, because...
One other, uh, thing, uh, after talking it over and looking at the committee, uh, there was concern in trying to bring parents in, uh, longevity, being able to have consistency, you know, as far as what, what we're talking at this committee reviewing the standards that are already there. And we felt, uh, it'd probably be difficult to pull administrators and such in on that, for that period of time. So right now, the proposal would be that, uh, the committee would consist...
Larry, speak into the microphone, please.
The proposal would be that, uh, the committee would consist of Kathy and Terry and I. And, uh, we at least would begin and, uh, we would try to, uh, go through at least one or two policies, uh, per month. And over the course of the next two to three years, hopefully, be able to pretty much bring things into focus.
Does that kind of meet your schedule too, Jenna?
Absolutely, I think some of the, the policies, uh, they're very similar. You can just do a lot of things, as far as eliminating extra like that we needed. But otherwise, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Larry?
I think that covered it.
Thank you for your work there. Um, we do appreciate that a lot. Okay, Kathy?
Okay, if you will, um, go to the attachments under the Vice President. And you'll all be happy to know, I think I have my problem solved, Jenna, help me. Okay, um, open up the one on vision statement and code of ethics first. And with this new, um, putting the policies on board docs, we want to get the right mission statement on and probably include a vision statement, if everyone is in favor, and then put our code of ethics, which, um, we talked about at our retreat. So, so far on, on this paper here that says board policies or whatever we wanna call it, um, the mission statement, we've already approved. The possible vision statement, let me give you just a little bit of background on this. This was our original mission statement before we knew what a mission statement was. And so it's very long and, um, it doesn't fit the mission statement criteria, but it does fit the vision statement criteria. And this is just a little reminder. Mission statement is what our hope is for the future. Uh, vision statement is what are we going to try to do now? So if you'll just look at this and let's read through it really fast and then you can decide by next time what needs to be changed on this or if you want to start from scratch and come up with a, another one. And we'll take it from there. So our possible visual, vision statement. Our vision as the Board of Education of the Cache County School District is to provide an equitable, challenging, meaningful and well-rounded educational learning experience in a measurable way so all students, oop, that needs to be fixed, can achieve learning, thinking, character skills and life skills necessary for su- success in their personal, educational and professional endeavors. It is our duty to provide a balanced and efficient budget to set policy which will enable the district to function effectively, to serve as an effective body as required, to encourage a continuous program of professional development that ensures highly qualified teachers and superior instruction are present in every classroom and to act as an effective channel of communication and ambassador for the school district, education community and public. In doing this, we pledge to prioritize the students' well-being, support a culture where students and staff feel appreciated and respected and provide fairness to the parent, students, personnel and citizens of the Cache County School District. Do you have any discussion or suggestions?
Is there a reason that parents is not plural on the last line?
Um, provide fairness to the parents?
Well, because all the rest of those are plural.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Okay.
Okay, so there's two of those on there. Thank you. We'll fix that.
Does the word ambassador in the second paragraph need to be plural?
Yes. Um, would you look over it before the next meeting if you have any other suggestions? And I'll get those corrections made. Maybe just email me if you have any corrections and I can jot that down. And then our code of ethics, um, this is what we already came up with this summer. And Alan, I know you wanted to have five, um, points, but when I tried to combine two of them, they just didn't work, so I ended up with six. So rather than go over them tonight, do you wanna look over these and...
Six is really close to five.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
And see if there's anything else that we should have in this code of ethics. And then this would be, um, probably the first thing that would come up, the, these three things, or at least the first two, would be the first things that would come up on the policies page where it says vision statement and, um, mission statement.
I don't see how you can combine two of those. I think six is probably what we need to have. There. And those are really good. If we all follow those, we have an excellent, wonderful working board.
And then if we do, decide to do a booklet or, um, a policy booklet just for the board, these could go in there too, to help with the new training of the people who come on board.
We're not gonna have any new, we're all staying.
All right, perfect.
You said that.
What?
You said that.
Yeah.
Unless something happens in life that moves us around.
Oh, now he's back pedaling.
Okay, now look at the second one. And, um, this right here is the, um, the board role for community councils. And, um, Terry directed me to the website where you can get information about community councils and the school lands trust money. And I just thought this would be a good document for everybody to have that you could look at and see what is your responsibility as a board member for the school, community councils in the schools that you're responsible for. And I'm not even gonna go over this, you can just go ahead and revisit at your leisure. And, um, there is another page, um, on that website that tells about what, um, things schools can use the money for. Are you interested in getting a copy of that as well? Or can you just go on to the website and get that information yourself? What would be the handiest for you? So, then when we're reading the, the plans, if there's something that's askew or something comes up like the chairs at North Cache, which really didn't fit, but they had budgets for that.
That was wide pane.
We would know.
I would like to have that put behind this page on this document. I'd like to have that document here, so we can just look at it.
I'll have Carolyn put it in the, in the same place then.
Good.
Okay? All right, that's it.
Nicely done.
Okay, do we have dates for that training?
Yes.
Uh-huh, they're in October.
Mm-hmm, I think it's the 25th or 26th.
The 25th and 26th, uh, I don't know if it'll affect the master board thing, but, uh, when the dates were changed, they cut me out, so I will not be able to attend. I'll be subject to 25th and 26th.
And what ti- what time is that?
I don't think they issued a time, yeah.
Yeah, Ann said she would get back with us with times, but she hasn't, I haven't seen anything. Have any of you?
Well, Steve, if you'd let Ann know, Larry's not gonna be here on the 26th, is that right?
I was hoping they'd go ahead on the 27th and just do our board meeting first and right after.
Because I have teacher training for Prevention Dimension, it's gonna be in this building from eight in the morning until eight at night, in this room. We've already got that scheduled.
On which day?
On that Wednesday.
On the 26th?
When's the training scheduled?
That...
25th and 26th. But they're not here.
Yeah, I was gonna say...
They're not here.
Well, I wouldn't be able to be at those. I would be here.
Well, in, in...
You don't have to be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's not training for you.
Some of us should be.
Yeah.
As representatives of the board.
Yeah, but it's not, it's training for the...
It's training for the school community council.
Well, I'm thinking one's on the north end, north end, and one's on the south end.
Yeah, that's what the email said. Okay.
Okay, we'll just have to find out time on that. So, Steve, if you could let Ann know, have Ann notify us of time so that we can get that down.
Well, it's Ann.
I think it's Ann that's working on that. Okay, thank you Kathy for that. Okay, let's go back. Board President, the only thing that I have is that we're dealing in such a time now that things can happen really pretty quickly. And I've talked about this before, but I would really like to have the board approval that I could talk to the sheriff's office and see that we're in agreement if we ever do have an active shooter. And heaven forbid that we ever do, but that we're trained and ready and practiced for that. Steve, I don't know if our schools have drills on active shooters and what to do.
Yeah, they do.
They do have lockdown drills.
It's a moving target. Telling us that some of the things that we practiced in the past are not some of the things that we have to do. So, it's kind of a difficult one, but we're still trying to implement. I talked to Scott lately, but the baseball bat or golf club and...
And the wash spray.
Well, we're going to go with bear spray. There's some issues with wash spray that I didn't know about. You wouldn't know about either, but Scott can tell us what the issues are. So, we're still going down that road. I think we've got capability of lockdown, but now they're telling us that maybe that's not the most appropriate.
It's always going to be new ideas, but I just feel that we need to be prepared.
Yeah, we're working on that constantly. I can tell you the thing that they were recommending before was to go through an active shooting drill. And I think that has also gone into...
Yeah, that's...
I'm glad we didn't go down that road. I thought at the time it wasn't something we gained much out of. Yeah, but we're constantly working on it.
Good. Okay. Then the other thing I have is we've got USBA coming up. And I think that's the second weekend in January. Am I, is that right? Terry, do you know that? By any chance, would the USBA be USBA?
First.
It is the 5th, 6th, and 7th of January.
Okay, 5th, 6th, and 7th. So, it's the first weekend then. But all of you, please put that down on your calendar and make sure that we can attend that meeting. That's some of the better training that we have. And get that down on the, excuse me, 5th, 6th, and 7th. So, that we're ready to go to that. Then the other thing we have coming up is our NSBA in Denver. And that's going to be early. It's in March. So, take a look at your calendar and see if you can attend that and let me know. And we'll let Carolyn know so that as soon as those dates become available, we can make arrangements and get to Denver and have that. Now, Denver's not nearly exciting. The city is some of them that we've been to. But the Rockies aren't, won't be playing that early, so. You might still be able to ski though. You never know there on the front range.
The dates for that are 24, 25, 26, 27. Of March.
Okay.
We can celebrate my birthday there.
Happy birthday, Kathy.
Twenty-nine.
Dayo?
Again.
Again.
It would be a good idea to make arrangements for dinner like we had the other, you know, when we were in Boston on the 29th to celebrate Kathy's birthday with that company that's kind enough to do that for us. We'll have that for you, Kathy.
Thank you. Sorry, I brought it up.
Six napkin burger.
But you have to eat it at three o'clock in the afternoon for Kathy to have dinner.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else, Steve? I think it's your turn.
Yeah. Craig, would you come up and just give them a brief information about next week and cover that? And then I'll cover just a few things.
Well, after about eighteen months of study, we're ready to get some public input and go out and provide informational meetings next week on the north end of the valley for elementary boundaries. We'll be beginning Tuesday night in Lewiston. And then we'll move to Cedar Ridge on Wednesday and Birch Creek on Thursday. The proposals are pretty straightforward, but they do affect a lot of kids. There are only two schools will not be affected in the proposal. Sunrise is one of them. That's probably the biggest one for us to worry about. But as we go forward to the north, we're not expecting anything in terms of Cove. Cove is currently zoned to Lewiston. And the community makes recommendation, we keep it there. There are some that are really quite in close proximity to Richmond and may prefer to go to White Pine. The enrollment would allow them to do so if they wish. So, it's pretty flexible in that boundary. And I think the needs of the people can be met in terms of where they prefer to go. In the case of North Logan and Greenville, that area, North Park, Greenville, those schools will actually be opening smaller. And that's because, of course, we're taking over Cedar Ridge. So, and that's important because major growth areas are on the east bench. And those areas, of course, we've had to try to address and equalize between those two school zones. We'll be presenting maps and answering questions and providing information. Going forward, we're targeting a hearing for the board in terms of what we hear and the committee's proposal. Back to you on October 27th. And the potential might be that you'd be able to have an action item on November 17th. We'll see how the public information meetings go. If the timeline has to be extended, glad to do that. But I think we're in a position where before Christmas, we should be able to have a recommendation to you and have some action in place to finalize the elementary boundaries on the north end.
Thank you for the work, Craig, that you've put in on that.
You're welcome.
I think when we look at that, we'll be very pleased.
I hope so.
We will be. Thank you.
Okay, our website has undergone a transformation. And this weekend, it will undergo, and you'll see a brand-new website out there. Much more friendly, really well done. We appreciate all the work that's gone into that. On that website, as of Friday, are you going to have the ability to put your address in and find out what school?
Well, since that's going to happen in the morning, so we're optimistic.
So, for anybody on the north end, there should be a link tomorrow. Type in your address. It'll tell you what school your kids are going to on the elementary boundary change. So, we think that might just give a lot of comfort to a lot of people so they don't have to worry about coming to the meetings, but they're still welcome to come if they would like.
How are they going to know about that? Have you sent a blast out through the schools?
With all elementary children, they're all telling bad facts. And then they're collecting first message.
Okay.
Email and text.
Okay.
I wanted to go out Thursday night.
Okay.
Okay.
Just for future reference, we will, if you would like it, we'll have a state of the district report in your hands next, with next time we meet.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. And then I would also recommend we spend a little time on soup and board relationship and duties. So, I'll get that on to the agenda.
Is that in our book that we have, by any chance?
I've got a brand-new book for you, but I don't know which book you're talking, but I've got...
The one that Larry's going to report on in just a few minutes? Oh, Randall's going to report on just a few minutes.
That's not, it's not in that book.
He's going to do it next November, or November 1st session.
So, that's been a topic that we were going to cover since our retreat. So, I'll have, I'll probably get the book into your hands and then we'll see what questions that might generate.
Well, just keep status quo. We're great here.
But that was a topic and we said we were going to cover it. So, it's one, you know, I hadn't forgot it. So, that's it.
Yeah, one other thing.
Oh, it's National Principals. Used to be a week. It's now National Principals Month.
Oh, wow.
So, you have the whole month. If you run into a principal, tell him thank you. We will be giving them a gift card or something at a future meeting. And we do have some information going out celebrating National Principals Month. They are really critical in everything that goes on in a school. And we have wonderful principals. And they're an integral part of why our test scores are where they're at and that leadership that they provide and the camaraderie they have and relationship they have with their teacher and staff really makes a difference in this district.
It's October. Is that the month?
Might.
Okay. Now, the other comment, Steve, that I had is you asked us to read that article from the legislative, what was it called?
No Time to Waste.
Yeah, No Time to Waste. And you're preaching to the choir here, buddy.
Know that, but I just thought you ought to know that these legislators now have it in, it's their own document. If they ignore it now, it's educational malpractice. And if we spend the whole legislative session talking about personalized education or...
Or vendor bills.
Yeah, or vendor bills, then I just think it'd be a real travesty. Now they know from their own study what they should be concentrating on.
And then my next question was how do we go about educating our legislatures to tune into that document? Because...
Well, I bound that nail every time I'm with them. So, yeah. And if you run into them and say, boy, we appreciate the fact that you have the study by your own organization and we sure appreciate every bill that came out of the legislature this year. You could trace its rationale for the reason it exists back to that report.
Okay. But that was a good article.
Yeah.
Was it UTEL legislators?
No, it's national. They have a council of state legislators. And so it was 20, 22? Yeah, 22 people. Democrats and Republicans spent two years trying to figure out what other systems had done to get their kids to be successful in instructional areas. And so it's their own report now. If they just ignore it, then, boy, it's going to be a travesty.
Are they very responsive with the top?
You know, they are. And our local legislators in the last, trying to remember when the last time I met with them was the K-16 Alliance. They were really, really interested. It's just that it's a long-term commitment and it's a lot of money. So, it's a money issue, I think, that scared them away.
If they want our education system to be the very best like that, they've got to invest. They've got to invest in it.
Well, it's encouraging that in the governor's office, Tammy Pfeifer is working and all the people that work with her as his education counselor, whatever she, advisor, education advisor, that they're actually working on a ten-year plan for the state to try and, and keying into that report.
Yeah. If they would just, you know, it'd be nice if they would make a substantial investment to begin the process. But if they just even had a plan that would, in five to 10 years, would get us to that point, that takes a little longer, but we'd at least get there.
Yep.
I was interested the other night. Governor Herbert said he would not support the tax increases.
Yeah. And he backed off of his $400 million too that he was talking about. And Lyle brought that up at the K-16 Alliance meeting. He said, I don't want, he said, I'm notorious for destroying Superintendent Norton's Christmas, but I'm going to take care of Valentine's, I mean, Halloween and Thanksgiving this time. Give you the projections and money coming in. There's not $400 million to even work with. It's more like $200 million. And this year's budget, the one that just finished, finished in the red. So, there's no money carrying over and no one-time money carrying over.
So, it must, might be a little tighter here.
Yep. Unless you get some more revenue coming in. And this is the year, because it's two years before they have to be run for election again. So, if they don't do it this year, they aren't going to do it next year. So... But good support from our local legislators.
Well, I'm going to try to get a hold of Val Potter and twist his ear right good before he steps in there. Because Jack has been really good doing that.
Yeah, yeah. It's, Jack, Jack had the courage to go out on his own and recognize that there needs to be a sizable input into...
Okay, Terry, one last item for us.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that next Wednesday on the 12th of October at 6:00 PM, we should be meeting here for our USBA regional fall meeting with Rich and Logan districts.
It's Wednesday, the 12th.
Hopefully, at this late date, Carolyn already has it on your calendar.
I would hope so.
Since we're hosting and we're having dinner and all that stuff here. But Richard Stowell said he would make arrangements with Carolyn for that, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Can I just mention one thing? On our MBA goals, we got everything done except for advocacy, which we had talked about maybe doing a day in a school with legislators. I don't know if that's possible to even happen. Maybe we need to change a goal there.
We can still try.
Do you think they would do it or not?
I don't, I don't know.
That meeting the other day here, Lyle said as much that he wasn't really impressed with the day the schools was going to help him.
So, somebody mentioned it to him?
Somebody has. He made a comment.
Oh, the day the superintendent was, that Dixon was here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's ongoing though, you know, with the legislatures, legislators. They, they're busy and they just don't want to take a day out to do it.
So, should we come up with something else?
If we can and get that, I think it would be good.
How about if I come up with some suggestions for the next meeting? We pick one and try to get it done in November.
Okay. That would be good. Okay, I just want to express my gratitude to you for your service and your work as you spend so much time and effort in our school board. And what a pleasure it is to work with you. And I'm grateful for your service and your sacrifice and being away from your families and your willingness to serve here on the Cache County School Board. So, thank you very much. I appreciate being able to rub shoulders with you and your friendship and your kindness and generosity and your willingness to serve. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Now, if we want to stay here.
I need a re-adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, Terry, I forgot to ask if there was any other further comment here.
You've asked that several times.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Jenna, thank you. And Craig, thank you.